Good evening. Welcome to the July 15th, 2025 Board of Education Business Meeting. Tonight's meeting will be streamed live on the District's YouTube channel. A direct link to the recorded video will be posted on the District's website. We had a special meeting earlier and the roll call was taken at that time. So if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we're ready for the really fun part of the evening, which is our extraordinary educational experiences. Dr. Abel? Avila? Anjali. C'est très cher.
I like it, Anjali. Well, yes, we have, as you can see, a full house of student celebrations tonight, which we are so excited to share with you. We are going to have our board and cabinet come in front of the board table as we set up to get started. At this time, I would love to have Connor Babbitt and Gracie Masidwan come forward. This talented team from Northtown took home the state title in duo interpretation at this year's State Speech and Debate Championships. Connor Babbitt and Gracie Masidwan won the championship against the largest field of competitors in state history this spring. Connor also earned fourth in storytelling. I know Connor is here. Oh, my gosh. So. There's Connor.
Come on down. Yay. Okay, so you were part of the duo acting and storytelling.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so what duo scene did you do, please?
We got our team right there.
Oh, the rest of the team is here. Okay, hold on. Time out. Come on. Okay, so which scene did you do, please?
Like an event, did we do?
No, I know the event. What did you do? What?
Oh, so basically, we got there, we performed. We basically get to choose a topic and perform. Oh, our piece was called Guns in Dragonland.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, my bad.
Okay, and it was humorous, serious, both?
It's a little bit of both, yeah. That's kind of what makes a piece good, is get a little bit of both.
I understand. I used to do that. Okay, all right, and the storytelling?
So my piece was Enemy Pie. It's basically about how, basically about friendship and how it's not always easy.
That's true. Do you have, okay, so like you, I'm gonna just pass the mic over, so I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourself in the school again. And any special friends, family, administrators that you'd like to recognize tonight, please?
Okay, okay. So my name's Connor Babbitt. I'm going in my senior year at North Kansas City. My mom and dad are there. Woo, yay. My coach, Ms. Dolinger, and then our head principal, Dr. Jones.
My name is Harper Ward. I am a graduated senior from North Kansas City High School. I've got my parents in the back over there, my coach, Ms. Dolinger, and I competed in storytelling at the national tournament and I earned 10th in the nation.
Hi, I'm Connor's duo partner, Gracie Masidwan. And as you guys know, we were first in the state. And I would ultimately like to thank Mrs. Dolinger. She's the best ever, actually. And I'd also like to thank my mom and my dad, who are, and my dad's here tonight with me, so, yeah.
State champs. I bet that doesn't get old, right? Hearing that over and over and over? That's pretty awesome. I've never been able to call myself a state champ in anything, so I am so envious. But congratulations. We're so proud of you. And I do have a question. So being state champs, what did you do with your duo interpretation that you felt set yourself apart than the competition? What was different? Good, I'm looking for a good one.
We can do both.
Okay. Ultimately, our goal with the piece whenever we were performing it was to shed light on something that had happened in our building the year prior. As you guys know, there was an incident at North Kansas City High School. And ultimately, the piece Guns in Dragonland talks about dealing with gun violence, especially through the lens of a child. So we wanted to bring that back towards our community and introduce why this is an issue and why it needs solved. So I think that's what we were trying to do.
I think what really set our piece apart from, oh, hey Garrison, of what set our piece apart from our competitors is that it was a personal story. So we included our personal experience and I think that's what really brought it into effect with our judges.
Congratulations.
Yes. If you'd like to go around and shake hands with her.
As they go around, Harper had a snuck up there on me, so I'm gonna tell you a little bit about her because she placed in storytelling. So Harper Ward, right there in the middle in the black, a member of the North Kansas City High School class of 2025, earned one final accolade this last month, capping an impressive high school career in speech and debate. Harper was a national semifinalist in the storytelling event, placing among the top 14 competitors in the country, 10th in the country. Congratulations Harper on your outstanding achievement.
And you've already introduced yourself, but you didn't tell us what story you told.
So my story was called Lily's Purple Plastic Purse. It was sort of a nostalgic story for me because my mom used to read it to me. And it was about just kind of a super energetic little girl who struggled to pay attention in class. So I really, I saw myself in that story. So I decided to perform it and I'm really happy with how far I took it.
Wonderful, thank you. My colleagues would also like to congratulate you. Take your shirt off here.
Okay, switching gears a little bit, we're gonna move on to state track and field. At this year's track and field championships, more than a dozen student athletes from North Kansas City schools earned a state title or spot on the podium. This talented group of competitors shattered records, made history, and achieved incredible success thanks to their hard work and dedication. This evening, we are proud to recognize many of these outstanding student athletes. If you would please come forward as I call your name. We have RJ Collins, Aaron Lanier Collier, Yandel Radillo, Jeremiah Kelly, Dallas Freidenberg, Sam Crumble, Mackenzie Doolin, Gillian Taney, Orin Wright, Gillian Burks, Kaitlyn Wink, Trinity Bates, Joey Marsh, and Din Tong. Congratulations to all of you.
Well, we are so very proud of each and every one of you for your accomplishments. When I was in high school, and that was a very long time ago, I was more of a fine arts person. But I have two brothers and I watched their dedication to their sport, how much time that they had to spend to fine tune to become the athletes they were. So you need to know that we recognize how hard you've worked. In fact, I live in the Oak Park attendance area. And I have three dogs, not that you want to know that, but I have three dogs. And I open the front door and I call that the babysitter, so they watch out the front door. And I tell that story to say, we watched the Oak Park Track and Field students running down the street. That's dedication at 6:00, 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning. So I know how hard it is and we really do appreciate all you do to, or to, bring recognition not only to your school, but to the school district. So here's what I'd like. If you'll give your name, your school, and your event, that would be great. And then if you brought some wonderful people with you, we want to recognize them too.
I am Joey Marsh. I am from Winnetonka and I run the 400. And I brought my mother and father, Scott and Diane Marsh.
I'm Gillian Taney. I'm from Staley High School. I run the 4x1 and the 4x2. And I brought my mom and dad and my nonnie and poppy.
I'm Gillian Burks. I'm from Staley and I run sprint and sprint relays. And I brought my mom Paige, my dad Tony, and then my brother Logan.
I'm Mackenzie Doolin. I go to Oak Park, or I went to Oak Park, high jump. And I brought my parents and my athletic director.
I'm Yandel Radillo. I go to Winnetonka High School and I do the 102 meter, a pair, parameters. And I brought my mom and my dad with me.
My name is Aaron Lanier Collier. I sprint and I specialize in hurdles. I brought my mom, my sister, my coaches, and friends and family.
My name's Sam Crumble. I do the 1x2 and sprint relays. And I brought my stepdad with me.
I'm Jeremiah Kelly. I specialize in the 110 hurdles and the 300 meter hurdles. I brought my dad and my fiancee here today.
I'm Orin Wright. I go to Staley High School. I'm going to be a junior. I run the 1, the 2, the 4, the 4x1, and the 4x2. And I brought my mom and my daddy.
Hi, I'm Kaitlyn Wink. I'm from Staley. I went to Staley. I did the 4x2, long jump, 100 hurdles, and the 100. And I brought my mom and my brother and sister and coaches.
Well, I just wanted to say, congratulations. You all have been jumping over the competition and sprinting past expectations all year long. Did you like that? Give me a little giggle, right? I've been working on that one, just a little bit. But I have two boys that ran, one of them that's in college that ran track, and then another one that's at Oak Park that runs track. And one of the thing I know about watching so many track meets is that to get through districts in Kansas City is hard. To get to sectionals and beyond sectionals in Kansas City is really difficult. But then to go to state and to compete as well as all of you did and to place in the top eight in the state of Missouri makes you among some of the most elite athletes that we have in the state of Missouri and in the Midwest. I told Jeremiah when he came up here, I'm like intimidated standing around all these amazing athletes. But it is such an accomplishment, such an accomplishment. And we are so proud of you for your, for our seniors. We know several of you are going on to compete at the collegiate level. And then we look forward to seeing some of our younger athletes continue to compete in the years to come. Congratulations. We'd love for you to go around now and shake hands with each one of our, we'll start right here, yeah, cabinet members and board members. Thank you. Go all the way back around. There we go. Oh, thanks. Congratulations? Yes. Congratulations. Proud of you.
Okay, we're both up, okay. Are we gonna sing or no? Staley, go ahead. No?
Are we going to play our? Well, next up, we have Staley Baseball. This evening, we are proud to celebrate the Staley Falcons baseball team. Last month, the Falcons took home second place in Class 6 at the state championships. Their inspiring run to the title game was the culmination of a historic season filled with record-breaking moments, hard work, and sure enough, determination. If our Staley baseball team could come forward with their.
Oh, wow. We were at the game that you all played, when I say we, my sister and I. She follows the sport. I obviously don't. But anyway, you were up against the Lee Summit team. And remember the final play that you did, the double play? My sister's comment was, she's seen a lot of Major League Baseball, but that was as good a play as she would have seen in a Major League Baseball game, that double play at the end. So that's why I said I wanted to talk at this point. But I'm gonna let Joe talk because he actually has family members that actually play baseball.
I do. In 19, I'm a Winnetonka graduate and so are my brothers, obviously. And in 1980, my brother Jeff was part of their baseball team that won the state championships. Here's what I'm gonna say to you. Even as late as last Thursday, my family got together, and of course, they're baseball heroes. And you will tell your story over and over again about your state championship. I guarantee that 40 years later, we're still hearing about it a lot.
All right, so if you will say your name, we obviously go to Staley, so you can skip that one. You can say what grade you are in school and any special people you'd like to recognize tonight.
I'm Jacob Garcia. I just graduated from Staley. I didn't bring anyone, unfortunately.
I'm Evan. I just brought myself.
I'm Brody Earlback. I just graduated and I didn't bring anybody.
I'm Carter Shawnaman. I just graduated and I didn't bring anybody either.
I'm Justin Green. I just graduated and I also didn't bring anybody.
I'm DeAndre Josenberger. I'm the head coach. All these guys are seniors. They're being really humble tonight. Jacob's going to Mineral Area. Evan Abbott's going to Emporia State. Brody Earlback's going to Iowa. Carter just got out of a plane. He's gonna be a pilot. He literally just got out of a plane. And Jacob's going to Wilson State in, Justin, I'm sorry, Jay Green. We don't call him Justin, in North Dakota. But these guys have done a great job. Lot of senior leadership. This is our first year. They broke the school record by seven wins, a total of 38 wins. Incredible culture. These guys have worked their tails off. And the thing, we had a lot of talent, but the thing that really set us apart was the team chemistry. They really got along, fought for each other, cheered for each other. We had 17 seniors this year. But with various abilities and, but they were all great teammates. We even played a couple freshmen over some seniors and these guys never pouted complaining. They just were ultimate about winning. One really impactful story on senior night, we were playing, Liberty North. We always want to beat Liberty North, but we had lost the previous week and it had put us in a conference tie. And so, you know, senior night's always special for seniors and for parents. And I went to these guys before the game and I said, hey, this is an important game, but how do you guys want to handle this game? Like if you guys are all happy playing in and getting in that bat, or whatever it takes, and the reserves piped up, say, we want to win, coach. Ultimately, we end up beating Liberty North pretty handily. We got everybody in the game. But that was a testament to who these guys were. They were, put them teams over themselves. So it was an awesome season. And like you said, it's gonna be memorable for the rest of our lives.
Well, congratulations. And I'll say what everybody else said, but an amazing season, 38 and 4, 10-0 in district play. I told you earlier, I was a little bit worried. We all worried during that Park Hill game when we were down by just a few runs, but you guys weren't worried, you said. So got through that. And because, because we were all worried for you. But got through that. Ended up, I know we were top 50 ranked nationally, in the nation, Staley Baseball, which is incredible to ever achieve that feat for any team is amazing. And I was talking to coach earlier and I was doing a little bit of research and there's about 1% to 3% of high school baseball players that will ever play in a state championship. So even though I know you didn't accomplish what you wanted to accomplish, you experienced something that very few kids will ever, baseball players will ever experience. And that's why you'll be talking about it for 40 years. So congratulations. Yes.
So Brody, I'm gonna brag on Brody real quick. He's first-team All-American in two different publications. First-team All-Region, school all-time record holder in wins, strikeouts. Shattered the record books in Staley history, probably never be beat. Evan's first-team All-Region. So we got some guys with, Brody had, gave up three earned runs the whole season with a .27 ERA. So historic.
Congratulations. We'd love you to go around and shake. Good luck. Congrats. Good luck.
Congratulations. 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 Also making history last month was Staley's robotics team. They would all come forward at this time. The Falcons made their mark. The Falcons made their mark at the Mo坎State Championship, an elite offseason regional competition. This event brought together 27 of the top-ranked teams from both Missouri and Kansas to face off at North Kansas City High School. Thanks to their collaboration and communication skills, the Falcons were chosen to join forces with Wentzville and Lee Summit North to form the number-one alliance. This alliance then soared to take home the championship. Congratulations, Staley Robotics.
One of the first stops I made when I was re-elected to the board a year ago was North Kansas City High School to experience the robotics. And what I got to see is how incredible minds do incredible things. And so as we go around and we, you introduce yourselves, say your name. If you'll just tell folks which one of the skills that you've learned in your coursework that helped you most in your robotics. How's that? And then, of course, we want to know if you brought some fantastic people with you.
Yeah, my name's Mitchell Harvey. And I'd say that a lot of the business and leadership from Staley High School has really taught me a lot about how to help a team and how to make it work with the other students, how to kind of bring everybody together. I do not have anybody with me. I do have my, I do have my coach with me and, yeah. Excited to have him.
My name's Alex. From school, what I've most been able to apply into robotics is mainly being able to CAD and know my way around to be able to manufacture parts more efficiently. And my mother is here with us today.
Where's mom?
Right now.
I'm Natalie Campbell. Through my four years of robotics, I learned a lot about wiring and all the electrical work to then go on to be the electrical lead for the team. So that's what I learned. I didn't bring anyone with me.
I'm Drew Harkey. And for my coursework, I'd say number one thing, like Alex, would be 3D modeling, something that really developed throughout the years. Oh, and I brought nobody.
My name is Austin Hubler. One skill I think I've learned a lot through my coursework is just programming from the STEM programs at Staley. And I did not bring anybody with me.
My name's Aiden Foltz. I've learned a lot about 3D modeling and perseverance and I brought my parents with me.
My name's Andy Feng. And I learned a lot about, like Austin, programming from Staley's CS teacher. And I brought my mom and dad with me.
My name is Kenna Martinez. And just like Andy and Austin, I have learned a lot of programming and I brought nobody with me.
I'm Ting Wen. I'm the, this is my first-year head coach for Staley. Before that, I spent about five years as assistant coach for Northtown and five years as a parent mentor. And nobody is here with me tonight. My wife, my wife is at school, nice school, and my daughter is with me, so.
The North Kansas City family is all here with you tonight, certainly. But congratulations. And so number one at the Mo坎, anytime we beat teams from Kansas, it's always great, first and foremost. But next time, we recognize you all, because I have a feeling there might be another time. I want you to bring the robot. It's only 120 pounds. We could do a little demonstration, right? It would be so awesome. But I have one question, and just one or two of you could answer it. What was the innovation, or what did you do differently with your robot that you felt set you over the edge to place first in this competition? What was different?
So I think one thing that we did differently this year that definitely improved the robot and the team as a whole is organizing ourselves better and to just different sub-teams, and then a strong business team, a strong electrical team, a strong mechanical team, and really allowing the underclassmen to take up roles and leadership roles in these teams, like as and when they proved they could.
Very good. Awesome. Congratulations. We are so proud of y'all. We'd love for you to come right through the line and shake our hands.
Well, that concludes this portion of tonight's board meeting. And while you all are welcome to stay for the rest of the business meeting, if you'd like to excuse yourself, this is the perfect time to do so. Thank you again for coming out tonight.
Moving on, our next item would be visitors' comments. At each regular business meeting and opportunity is provided for visitors to address board members regarding any subject concerning education. Patrons are asked to contact Board Secretary with a request to speak prior to the meeting. Yellow cards are also available and located just inside the doors upon entering the boardroom. And each individual is allowed three minutes, total of 30 minutes allowed. And we have no such cards this evening. So moving on to item number two is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
All right. Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or discussions on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. And the agenda has been passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are 34 items on the consent agenda. So is there a motion at this point on this?
No movement.
All right. Motion has been made and is there a second to approve the consent?
Second.
All right. Are there any questions or further discussion about the consent agenda? All right. Call for the Treasurers' report.
Thank you, Madam President. June 2025 operating receipts totaled $14.9 million, which is a 74.7 decrease from the same period of the prior year. The decrease in revenue is due mainly to the fact that accruals for the receipt of federal funds and state ECF funds have not been recorded. Prior year accruals totaled $20 million. Year-to-date operating revenue totaled $343.3 million, which is a 2.1% increase due mainly to increases in property tax and basic formula revenue. Year-to-date operating expenditures and encumbrances incurred of $339.2 million, a 6.2 increase from prior year. The district's current tax budget increased $8.1 million over the prior year. The district received communication from DESI that June payments for early childhood special education will be received, however. The remaining payments owed to the districts will be prorated as full funding was not available at this time. Districts will receive remaining reimbursement in the month of July.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion on the Treasurers' report? All right. So at this point, we will call for the vote. All of those that are in favor, please say aye.
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 Those say no? Any abstentions? Are you abstaining?
I abstain.
All right. Which brings us to item number 4.2, which is Beacon as a separate consent, or consent item for separate consideration.
Move to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Okay. So, all right, is there a second? Is there a discussion on personnel? Okay. All of those that are in favor of accepting the personnel on separate consideration, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Abstain.
And one abstention. Okay. Then next, we do have item number 4.2, which deals with Beacon. Is there a motion? Do we need a separate motion on this? Okay. So is there a motion to accept this?
So move to approve 4.2 as presented.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Is there any discussion or questions on this item? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Abstain.
Abstain. Two abstentions. Thank you. Moving on to, okay, new business, item number five. There is no item, no new items of business have been presented this evening. So we're now up to item number six, Superintendent Presentation Reports. And Dr. Evans and Dr. Vokolak.
Good evening. This may be the first time I'll ever, let's see if we can get this right. So, hey, thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity. I say us because there's three of us actually speaking to you tonight. And really, what you all just witnessed for the last 30 minutes is, is the highlight, the best part of what I've been able to do the last five years in this position is just see our kids achieve amazing things that many times they don't even realize they're capable of. But you all, with your investment, have created an infrastructure, an atmosphere, a culture for those kids to have that success and for our staff to be able to teach them, coach them, train them, in order for those moments to become these, these lifetime memories that they will have whenever they leave our doors for the final time. So, thank you. I hope what you get from this time, from this short presentation, is that you understand that there is a lot of value on the investment that you guys make. And you get to see it firsthand with the kiddos, but you're going to hear tonight from a student, a little bit just behind the scenes of what that process is like and what she experienced just in her short time as a student athlete at Oak Park High School. And so I'm really excited for you all to get to hear from her. So, return on investment. You all pass bonds, you, you guys agree to do a lot of things because you know the potential impact. And throughout a year, there's all these wonderful moments that we get to witness because of the investment you make. So I want to present a little bit of data just to start with because I think it's important just to get that overarching view of how many kids are impacted through the work you all are doing. I also have to take the time just to thank all the other people. I thank Mr. Fritz and his team because, again, there's a big financial component to what you guys are providing our kids. I certainly have to thank our HR department and Dr. Daniels because they continue to push us to make sure that we're going to put the best possible people in front of our students to give them the best possible chance for success. Thank our custodial grounds department for every event, safety and security, everything we do. Really, this is the front porch of our school, right? This is what the community sees and this is how they identify our school district by the product that we put out there because they don't get to go into the classroom every day. And so this is how they identify. And right now, we have over 10,000 kids at our high school, middle school, participating in something outside of the school day. About 3,300 of those kids do multiple things and that's what we want. I remember I was a teacher at Staley and Clark Marshaun would always say, when the buses leave at the end of the day, we want it to be empty. And we, we want every single kid to find something to engage in after the school day. Our high school participation increased by 3%, which is the biggest jump that we've had in the five years that I've been here. Middle school has been just crazy growth because of the number of opportunities that we've been providing. That's leveled off a little bit this year, but the high school jumped pretty good. GPA 3.0 for kids that are participating in something outside of the school day versus a 2.77 for kids that don't. So that's an easy thing to look at and say, wow, this is really beneficial for those kids to be engaged. According, of course, the attendance data is going to reflect that as well. And then we're going to have 92 kids that are going to continue to compete in something, some athletic activity or activity at a two or four-year institution following graduation this year. A reminder of just the purpose. So again, you guys get to see these great high points of student success, but really what we're doing is we're providing opportunities, real-world experiences for our kids to use these characteristics that we talk about with Portrait of a Graduate in a high-stakes, real-world environment, right? We're emphasizing those things that hopefully they're getting in the classroom. We're giving them an opportunity to use those things on the day-to-day in their athletics and activities. We also know the importance of them, their health. We hope that they take things with them after high school that are just habits, whether those are physical health, whether it's those just making sure they take care of their mental health, that they connect to those, to a group around them for their social, emotional health. We want them to develop healthy habits and we know these are ways in which they can do that. Of course, I just mentioned that connection. I mean, as adults, we know this. We know how important it is to be connected to people around us and to feel like you're part of something bigger than yourself. You're doing something not just for yourself, but something for the greater good, right? And so we want our kids to understand that there's so much value in just not allowing yourself to become isolated. That's been a trend. We know that with young people over the, over the last decade at least. And so for us to have that personal connection, that's really great value that we can provide our students. And then obviously, that piece of belonging. And that's different than connection. That belonging is, you accept me for who I am, just as I am, right? And I now am a part of this group and I get to be myself and I get to find that thing in my school that allows me to show who I am. And not only that, I get applauded for who I am and the things I can do. And so we want every kid to have that sense and feeling of belonging, that they can be the star of the show, so to speak, and we give them an opportunity to do that. So how do we do that? We offer a smorgasbord of things, right? And this is where Matt comes in and his team comes in because every one of these things, there's a price tag to it, whether it's a staffing, whether it's a building, whether it's a field, whatever it is, it all costs something, right? But we understand that we're just throwing so many things out there and, you know, we have 47 opportunities here, we have 20-plus clubs, and we're hoping they just attach to something. And so I'm grateful for the support that you all give for these things because without this, we wouldn't be able to get the numbers, the thousands and thousands of kids, kids that we have involved in athletics and activities. So while it can seem like a lot, and I can understand that every time that consent agenda rolls through and like, we're going to spend money on this and we're going to do this, it's of great value and I hope you understand that. It's of great value and you see it, you see it every single board meeting that you guys do such a great job of recognizing our kiddos. So we look for these things and this is what you saw tonight, right? We look for these, like I said earlier, lifetime moments that these kids get to have that they'll never forget. We had a lot of history this year. I mean, you can go back and it's crazy that we can have a district of our age and still be doing things for the very first time. So it's, it's really remarkable, but that's again, because you guys have created that atmosphere and that culture for that type of success. But when you see all these and you see the, the kids that you bring up every single week, there's so much more to that story and that's what I'm excited for you all to hear from Kendall tonight. So Kendall Angelo is the very first state champion girls wrestler from Oak Park High School. And I saw her wrestle for the first time last year, her sophomore year, and I was intrigued just with the way that she competed. This year, I'm watching again and I'm like, this girl's an absolute machine. It's unbelievable. She is, if you've ever watched wrestling, you get tired. It's an exhausting sport. And at the third period, she is wrestling like it's the very beginning of the match. And I'm like, there is something internal, there is some kind of thing inside this young lady that, that she just does not have a quit in her. And so you could see that this year and it was really amazing. So I turned to Mr. Valdez and I said, tell me more. And he's like, Casey, she's got a great story. And so, and just of how she came to this point in such a short amount of time. So I'm excited for you all to hear from her and I hope what you hear from her is, is that she has found that thing that has given her something that she didn't know that she had, which is, which is really cool. And so, and after she's done, Mr. Garrison, Dr. Garrison's going to come up and talk a little bit about those next steps because we're not perfect. We understand that. We understand that we have holes and we are, we are working to address those issues so that every single kid gets the type of experience that these kids are getting. And so he's going to talk a little bit about just how we're going to do that. So, but let me bring up Kendall right now.
So my name is Kendall Angelo. I'm currently a student at Oak Park. Before I get started, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Vokolak and everybody who was behind me being up here today. I guess talk about something that I love and just share a little bit of my story. So, yeah. Freshman year, I was all over the place, not academically, but when it came to sports. I really thought basketball was my thing. I showed up to every offseason workout, stayed after school, my warm-up playlist's on full blast, walking like I was already a starter. It showed my dedication. The only issue was I somehow never made the tryouts. Looking back, maybe I was more in love with the idea of being a hooper than actually hooping. I tried other things too, tennis, the step team, anything that would make me feel welcome, but nothing stuck. I was just trying to figure out where I belonged. Then, one day in algebra class, Mr. Williams, who wasn't just my teacher, but also the women's head wrestling coach, pulled me aside and told me about wrestling. At first, I didn't know what to think. And when I went home to my parents and told them about the idea, my mom wasn't a big fan. Now, my dad, on the other hand, was encouraging, of course. It took me a year, but I gave wrestling a shot. The first time I stepped on the mat was the very first time I felt stillness. No anger, no fear, just stillness. So I guess when your math teacher says, I think you'd be great at this, you listen, mostly because you're trying to pass the class, okay? Wrestling gave me more than just a sport. It gave me discipline, grit, and a reason to push myself. But what really made it stick were the people behind it, Coach Williams and Coach Sweet. They've been in my corner far beyond the mat. Coach Sweet taught me how to jumpstart a car and what happens when you get pulled over without your license. Coach Williams, he taught me how to use a printer at school and reminded me that it's okay not to be good at something. He always says, if you're not good at it, good. That means you got something to get better at. I didn't understand it at first, but now it makes perfect sense. Coach Williams believed in me from the start and Coach Sweet kept pushing that belief even further. They didn't just yell at me to work harder or get upset when I didn't bring my hips through, my double legs shot. They took the time to understand who I am, what drives me, how to help me get better, not just as a wrestler, but as a human being. Loving a sport is one thing, but having coaches who love to teach, love to teach it and who truly want to see you grow, that's what keeps you coming back. That's why I wrestle. Wrestling has changed me on every level. It's changed how I see the world. It's made me tougher, more focused, and definitely more aware of how many stairs our school has when we're conditioning. It gave me peace in a crazy world, discipline in the classroom, and purpose. So to the Oak Park Wrestling staff, thank you. You didn't just coach me, you believed in me when I didn't even know who I was yet. You helped me find something I didn't even know I was looking for. Freshman year, I was just a kid chasing the idea of who I thought I should be, but now I know exactly who I am. I'm a wrestler and I'm proud of that. I can't wait to step back on the mat next season, not just to compete, but to keep growing, keep learning, and keep proving to myself that I belong here because now I know I do. Thank you.
Kendall, thank you very much. As we, we listened to her speak, I think the words that came to mind that she said was belonging. And as we listened to her story and we listened to her connection that she has at Oak Park High School, that is definitely the blueprint for what we have for all the extracurricular programs that we do in our district, is finding a way for our students to belong and finding the connection for them to school. So, well done. Congratulations and we can't wait to keep watching you do what you love to do. As we look for areas of growth, the first thing that we need to make sure that we're doing is taking into account input that we're receiving from our leadership as well as from the Board of Education and from our communities. Because as Dr. Vokolak stated, there are always things that we can do better and that has to be our mindset as we go about doing, doing our jobs in the field of education. So as we do that, you know, just some examples of some things that we did this past year that we saw that were identified as areas of growth that were addressed was at the middle school level, we were able to add stipends for coaches for both our middle school robotic teams and our middle school debate teams. So that allowed us to better serve our students that were members of those programs. At the high school level, we had the opportunity to increase our district funding for our robotics teams at all four high schools. And so these are our programs that students are a part of, that they fill that connection with, that allows us to go through and serve them. So as we continue to look for areas of growth, the number one thing that we have to keep doing as a district and as, as our people in leadership positions with our coaches is we have to continue to do self-evaluations. So we have to constantly look at the things that we're doing and ask ourselves, how can we continue to be better at the things that we're doing? From a district level, we can continue to look at the infrastructures that we have set up for how we are, we are doing things to put our students in the position to have the most success that they can. We will also continue to look at programs throughout the Kansas City area as well as the state of Missouri to see how our programs stack up and see the things that, where we are excelling compared to other programs throughout the state. One of the things that Dr. Vokolak talked about was the impact that participation in an extracurricular program has on GPA and student attendance rates. So we know that if we get students involved, it's going to help them. So the biggest question that we have to ask ourselves is how do we connect more students? So for North Kansas City schools, we believe that extracurricular athletics and activities are important supplements to curricular programs and are vital to a student's total educational experience. So the things that we want to focus on this, it's extracurricular. So how are we using the connections that we give students to build to help them achieve their most potential academically? So as we look at this, we understand that we have an ability to impact students across so many levels. And as we look at things that we have put in place that are helping us connect more students, an example would be the decision by the Board of Education in our district to construct new performing arts centers at both Winnetonka High School and Oak Park High School. At first glance, when you, you think about that, you understand that it's definitely going to benefit band and choir and orchestra and theater. But you also understand, when you look at it, that it's going to allow us an opportunity to take the spaces that those programs are currently using and for us to repurpose them to where it's going to benefit so many more students within that school. The facilities and the ways that we have done things throughout our district definitely highlights our commitment that our district has. And as Dr. Vokolak stated, we are very appreciative. appreciative of all the opportunities that we have gotten to support our kids. As we go into this next school year, our goals that we have, first is we want to continue to provide extraordinary experiences. As educators, we know that all of our students are unique. And so it is our job to create connections for every student to, like Kendall spoke about, we have that connection, we have that sense of belonging. So to do this, we have to have a champions mindset for all of our programs regardless of what it is. We have to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. Second, we want to strengthen student connections. So when students enter our buildings, they come in with different passions, they come in with different interests. So whether it's athletics, it's an activity, it's a club, there's something that they are passionate about. So as educators, we want to make sure that we're using this as an avenue to connect more students with the school. We understand that if a student is connected with the school, it's not only gonna benefit the student, it's gonna benefit the school as a whole as well. Lastly, we want to be relentless. So through the actions that we've made through our, our district, we have shown our commitment to our students. But with that said, our mindset cannot be one of complacency because we always understand that we can do better. And so by working with everybody within the district, you know, that, that is our goal, to never be complacent and to keep working to improve things. So we owe it to the students, we owe it to our families and members of our community to be relentless champions for all students. So Madam President, that concludes our, our presentation. You know, at this time, if, if you have any questions or any members of the Board of Education have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those.
Okay, I think we'll just go around if there are any comments. Ms. Wagner?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I think that you offer so many wonderful programs, you really do, and it's, it's great every time we get to see all the kids who are engaged in them. I worry because we've seen the percentages of the, the high school students who are not engaged and how that sense of belonging kind of drops off in high school. I don't know how to make them wanna try something, but if there's any way to do that, I think that we would all be willing to support that because we want to see those numbers go up. We know that we have great programs out there, so thank you for this.
I have one comment that throughout the, the presentation, the word that I kept hearing was balance. The fact that you talked about belonging, connections, and engagement in the classroom, that balance has to be there for kids to be successful. I think Dr. Evans taught me that. And also the health, when you talked about physical, mental, and social, that speaks about balance and the health of the child. So very strategic, and I really appreciate the time you guys put in. It's long, long hours.
Thank you.
Well, Dr. Vokolek, I did not know you from Adam. When we got into the facilities committee, planning for this next bond, and I learned tonight the stat that probably drove your passion for the middle school, and that's, excuse me, sixty-five percent increase in participation at the middle school, and absolutely they deserve to have good facilities, both in the fine arts but in the athletics too. So I'm glad that you were able to, to deliver for those youngsters in those programs. And then one, is it Kendall? You know, great wrestler, so excited that you've got a, a vision for your life, but I'm telling you, you are one articulate speaker. So thank you very much. You did a great job.
Well, I have to start by saying, Kendall, I saw your match in Columbia. It was so, I mean, you've probably heard me. I am, I'm a loud wrestler watcher, but I don't know, you might not have heard me because there were so many people screaming for you, and it was just really, really cool to see. Congratulations. Thank you so much for being here tonight. And thank you so much for all that you do for our athletics and for our extracurricular activities. And, you know, we, my family has just benefited so greatly from, from all of the programs in, in our school district. And, you know, I think about it a lot because I'm up at Staley every single day. We've got soccer or speed camp or wrestling camp. Every single day, we've got at least two things at Staley, and it's crowded up there. There's a lot of people up there during the summer, and it's just, it's such a great, I mean, not only is it, you know, pushing, pushing our students for all the ways in which you detailed, but, you know, it's giving them something to get up for in the summer, you know? It's like, it, it's just so great, and it just continues all, year-round, and it's recognized, it's appreciated, and you're doing such great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hines? Do you have anything, Susan?
Yeah, I also wanted to just express appreciation for all of your teachings that you have brought in. It's really, it's all of the things you can have to talk about. What struck me was your teacher reaching out to you, and so that's a question that I have for Dr. Vokolek or anyone else who can speak to this. How are our faculty and teachers engaged in noticing, right, and reaching out to students? Because, you know, that adult connection, we know, is a really important part of the school experience.
Yeah, and obviously Kendall's a, a great example, but she's one of many, many examples. I mean, you know that our A.D.s and their, their goal obviously is to get as many kids involved in something as possible. So they emphasize that to all of their coaches and sponsors of saying, "Hey, what are you doing to grow your programs?" And honestly, growth or consistency, consistently high numbers is a sign of a great leader. And so, you know, we, we see that, we see that in so many of our, our different activities, right? And when we see that it's not going so well, a lot of times, you know, we know, "Hey, let's, let's work on these things. Let's work on recruitment. Let's work on how we have a conversation with a kiddo. Let's work on what we can do to entice more kids to be part of what you're doing because what you're doing is great and, and we know they're gonna benefit from it." So certainly there are strategic and pointed conversations about what we're doing to grow those programs.
After, after Ms. Peter speaks.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much for all of this. I just want to say, first of all, the comment is just, all the things that North Kansas City Schools has to offer is one of the reasons why after we left for a couple of years, we came back. And when we came back, we made a decision specifically to come back to this district because of all of the opportunities. And I want to say first and foremost that I'm so grateful for all of the middle school activities that we offer that is something that a lot of districts that are, you know, are competing districts, if you will, don't offer, and they're quite jealous. And it has really made a huge difference in my daughter's experience at middle school. You know, that is a tough time, and you're trying to figure out where you fit in. And I will say, my daughter goes to Newmark, and those teachers have been pivotal in encouraging her to get involved in things, and, and she's also one to, to try and get involved in a lot of things. But it literally changed her ability to be involved in swimming, which they basically said, "Come and swim with us. If you, as long as you can, you know, doggy paddle down, you're welcome here." And, and they taught her, you know, her strokes. She's now doing summer swim, she's now doing club swim, all because she had the opportunity to join at Newmark. And I think that that's just a really special thing, and it changed her middle school experience from, "I really hate this, I don't make me go," to, "I can't wait to go because I have all my friends that I made from swimming." So, so I think that that's something that we just can't lose sight of. And to Susan's point and to the, to the other things that we've said, you know, just making sure that teachers are, sometimes I think we even forget as teachers, the importance of, that it has to just make that one little invitation to that kiddo because I have one child who will get, do anything, and then I have two who will do their best to hide and make sure that they're not seen. And the only way that they will get involved is to have that personal invitation and, and time of encouragement. So I just hope that that's something that, that, and I know that they do, but the teachers and faculty just remember how important and pivotal that is, and that one conversation, to your point, can change the trajectory of that child's life forever. And so kind of to that point, and Susan alluded to my question, but I think one of my questions is, you know, just talking about one of the goals of being strengthened student connections, what are some other ways or, or do we have kind of a, a metric goal that we're looking at, that we're trying to, to push for? I mean, we've cut up three percent participation at the high school level, and it's tough. I've got a high schooler, he'll be a senior, and what are some other ways? Are there any actions, I guess, that you all are kind of thinking of in terms of that goal to kind of help pull some more of those children out of their shells?
Yeah, I think, you know, it, it just goes back to the, the most important thing that we have, you know? So as educators, it's our kids. And so trying to find as many ways as we can build connections for students. So, you know, as an A.D. at, at North Kansas City High School, you know, my goal was to try to allow a school of seventeen-hundred students to build communities of twenty, thirty, you know, hundred kids, so that they have that connection to that school. And so as we look at strengthening student connections, I think it's, it's looking at the opportunities that we have, you know? And it's easy for us to look at the data from a Misha standpoint. As, as, as that information, you know, our, our athletic directors are obligated to throw that on, on, on the Misha website for eligibility purposes. But we can also look at the opportunities that we're providing for students that aren't Misha-related. So looking at clubs, looking at, at, at different things that students have an opportunity to be a part of that can be the attraction and be the draw to get them into school. So I think when we look at strengthening student connections, we're looking at the opportunities that we have and trying to get a baseline, you know, with the clubs and the activities. Sometimes those can be difficult to try to get, but trying to get a baseline of what that looks like at each school, and that will give us a starting point to see how we can try to structure things to try to build more connections for all of our kids. Thank you.
Got one thing to add to that. These guys are being modest, but, and Valdez is here and these guys is at long-time A.D.s. When we went to feeder patterns, we're gonna connect with those kids earlier, and we're gonna talk to those kids, and we're gonna connect with them. Our high school kids are down there in the elementary schools, as you know, and so that has been one strategic thing, and these guys have worked their tails off to get their coaches, get their sponsors, and then get those connections early. Because if we can get them early, then it, you know, it's, it's tougher when you just come into high school. They're still grinding and they're still working at it, but as a district, when we made that commitment, that's made, that's made a huge difference, and these guys have worked their tails off to get it done.
Yeah, I'm really glad that you brought that up, actually, because I think that's something that we have to dig into more too, is the leadership of the older kids and them going, I mean, you know, seeing a senior in high school going through the halls of a elementary school, I mean, those kids are like, "Oh, my gosh." And, you know, to that point too, you know, we've already had coaches that have connected with, you know, my daughter who'll be swimming at Staley next year to go down and help coach Newmark, you know, to, to continue that. So I love that, and I think that that's really important. Thank you.
This kind of segues, I think, into what we're talking about, but two things. One, I could not agree more, and you know, I know when my nephew David was wrestling in middle school, you know, Newmark Middle School was not like the most competitive place to wrestle, and he's always been really, really good, but my brother and my, and, and his wife, my sister-in-law, you know, they were like, absolut, you were, you know, supporting your school, and it's not that he didn't want to either, but it was, it was important for them to have him wrestle at that, at that level, for that camaraderie. So I, I think that, you know, to the extent that we can urge all of our, all of our athletes, right, that excel, to also continue to play in our school sports is, is huge. And then kind of along those lines, what, you know, I know Casey, you and I have talked about that, the feeder, even like at a club level, I mean, you know how successful like this Staley wrestling program has been because of the feeder, the clubs that feed into it and that, that affiliation? It's kind of unique, I think, maybe to wrestling. Are you seeing any more of that relationship along the way?
Certainly, we are, we task all of our high school varsity, coaches, sponsors. Our fine arts do a great job of this. They do a great job of connecting and kind of getting kids in a pipeline early on with, starting with fifth grade strings, right? And, and then we get them going and, and start to direct them. But in, in our athletics, sometimes it's just not as easy because you guys know the, the culture of what things, kids are playing all over the city for teams all over the state with kids all over the country. I mean, it's a, it's, it's a monster. So, but we do certainly know that we have a lot of families and a lot of kids that would benefit from a local feeder, if that's the best way to say it, program, right? And so we certainly are working on that right now. I mean, right, I can just tell you right now, football's one, we're really working on trying to develop a direct feeder. So Staley and Oak Park both will have some kind of feeder program this coming year, and this is, that's never happened before. So we identify that basketball has, has the ability to do that a little bit. We've seen that with the Oak Park kids in particular, that play together from a very young age. So we are certainly looking to identify opportunities for that, and we really do task, and I think David could speak to this, we task our high school head coaches to say, "All right, where, when are you identifying your kids? How, how are you getting to know them? The earlier the better, as Dr. Evans just said. And then how do we connect them? Because there's nothing more fun than going to school and being in class with the kids that you're playing with and, and talking about what happened last night. That is an experience that you, you don't get when you're doing all that club stuff, I guess is the best way to say it.
Thank you all very much. You know, when you said champion mindset, it's like, yes, that's huge. Kendall, I think you need to be the poster child for not just wrestling for women, but I think you just need to latch on to some of these other coaches and go tell your story to, you know, the kids that they use recruiting for basketball or baseball or some of the other stuff like that. I used to recruit kids out of the in-school suspension room, and, because those kids were there because they were lipping off, and those were the kind of kids I needed on a debate team. So that worked really well for me. I would just pass that on. And yeah, sixty-five percent middle school, you're not at those tournaments where I am, where there are two hundred of them in one room for the evening, and it's quite inspirational. So, anyway, this kind of activities, I mean, it changed my life. It was the kind of thing that gave me a career and something that I have loved very dearly forever. So thank you all for helping make this happen for a lot of young people, middle school and high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Two things real quick. One, I said a bunch of thank yous, and I forgot to thank Dr. Evans. I will say, he finds a way to help me phrase and, and work things in ways that are beneficial for kids. And so he puts up, whenever I'm saying, "Hey, we gotta do this, we gotta push, we gotta, we gotta go," he, he does a great job of making it strategic, and, and so I appreciate his support throughout the last five years. And then I want to give Kendall an opportunity to, she has, she's brought a crew with her tonight, so if she can just kind of tell her who's with her, and then obviously her coach is behind her, introduce him, and, and then we can thank them and say goodbye. So thank you guys again.
Okay, next is item number, let's see, six point oh-two, risk management report. Matt?
Yes, thank you. It's always inspirational to talk about kids. This is not that talk.
Yeah, we know.
However, I do have James Charlesworth with Charlesworth Consulting here to just, it's really, this is an informational report to really discuss the current RFP for our risk management profile, our, our property liability and workers' compensation insurance policies. And with that, I'll turn it over to James.
Thank you, Matt, and I appreciate you putting me on the, the calendar for after those presentations. You know, one thing I didn't see was, I didn't see insurance club. So that might be something you, you throw on there, get one person maybe. And I can't believe all those young people didn't want to stay and hear about insurance. So as noted in, in Matt's summary, we're in the process of marketing our property and liability insurance. It looks like we're gonna have two options for you. One's gonna be a standard insurance program like you have today, and the other will be a associational pool or trust. Now pools and trusts are different than insurance, and I thought it would be a good opportunity to talk to you today and just kind of outline the differences, let you ask some questions, try to get through that so that when you are being asked to make a decision at the September twenty-third meeting, this isn't all new to you. So, so feel free to interrupt me, I'll go relatively quick. But basically, let's see if I can do this. There we go. So what is... So feel free to interrupt me. I'll go relatively quick. But basically, let's see if I can do this. There we go. So what is an associational trust? Basically, it's a group of similar organizations that are banding together to create their own insurance company, if you will. They started in the mid-eighties when the insurance market was very difficult, hard market, very high premiums, very low capacity. And so a lot of pools started mid-eighties. So they are member-focused. You are sharing the risk with your fellow members. And so that's kind of the idea behind pools. Let's not worry about insurance companies and how up and down they are. Let's control our own destiny. And so they got very popular, especially for government. So they're structured like a lot of organizations have a board, they have an administrator, they have, the pool itself has its own documents. They're not insurance policies. You don't pay premiums, you pay contributions, or some call them assessments. And they're not insurance policies, they're coverage documents. So it's different. Now, they may look the same, they may feel the same, but they're not the same. And that's what we're going to talk about today. So basically, you pay a contribution. It's like, we'll call it a premium, it's a contribution. You pay your X number of dollars. So roughly eighty, seventy percent of that goes into a loss fund. So everybody's seventy percent of their money goes into this big pile. And then you've got thirty percent pays for reinsurance. Insurance companies buy insurance and pools buy insurances as well. Your administration, your claims, your third-party administrator, et cetera, et cetera. So the pool members will have deductibles, similar to your current program. Usually they're a little bit lower than your standard insurance. And then the pool, with all that pack of money, fills in this retention group. So for property, it's usually around one and a half million dollars for wind and hail claims, maybe five hundred thousand for other claims. For your liability, it's usually a half million dollars in that, in that point. So you may have a ten thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar deductible. You pay that, the pool pays up to their five hundred thousand, and then you have insurance on top of that. Because of this, it's real important to look at the finances of the pool to make sure they have enough money to cover their expenditures and their losses. So they'll have an actuary come in every year, look at the reserves, look at incurred but not reported, or development factors, et cetera, et cetera. And they will make sure that the pool has enough money. So if you're ever part of a pool, you want your finance people to be involved and connected to it. The reason is, is that when you have insurance, and I'm kind of jumping around here. When you have insurance, you've got regulatory oversight. So you have the Missouri Insurance Department, they will approve the forms, they'll approve the rates, and you'll have something called a guaranteed fund, so that if an insurer goes bankrupt, there's monies to pay to step in and for that bankrupt insurer. Now, based on your size, you probably wouldn't qualify for that anyway. But there's also coverage consistencies. There's the Insurance Service Office, which creates insurance policies. A general liability policy from Travelers and a general liability policy from Philadelphia, they're going to pretty much be the same. It's very consistent. Where a pool, the coverage documents are different. For example, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, which is a public entity pool in South Dakota, I wrote all their policies. So it's, and they're custom for what's happening in South Dakota, which is different than what's happening in Missouri. But you have more consistency with traditional insurance. Your exposures are pretty predictable, it goes fine, they're stable, you know, they got millions and billions of dollars. So, you know, you don't really have to worry about them. You've got your AM Best at rates them and make sure they're an A, A-plus company, A-plus plus, you're good. But there's a ton of market volatility. We're seeing that right now. You've seen it in your property premiums for the last four or five years. Premiums are going up twenty percent, they go up eighteen percent, they go up thirty-five percent. They don't care that you're a budget-oriented organization and you budgeted twelve percent. They don't care. They're going to charge you what they're going to charge you. So a trust is a little bit different. Again, there's no guaranteed fund, and you are subject to assessment. So let's say that you're a member of the pool beginning this September, and you're in it for five, whatever. And, but September twenty-five to twenty-six was just a disaster year. Bunch of hail, bunch of tornadoes, bunch of sexual abuse, bunch of law enforcement. It's just, and that's not you, it's just all the members of the pool. So you got to know who your brothers and sisters are. It's just bad, okay? Well, you got reinsurance, that's fine, but if there's not enough money, they'll come back to you and say, oh, by the way, you owe us three hundred thousand dollars. And you can't do anything about it. You've got to write the check. And that can be five years from now, because those claims are, they linger, they linger, they linger. You get enough attorneys involved, it lingers some more. And so that is the main point that you have to understand about trusts, is that to join a trust, I think that's my next line, to join the trust, they have bylaws. And as a board, you would have to approve and pass a resolution or whatever the mechanism is to approve their bylaws. And you are subject to those bylaws. And those bylaws will include language that says you are financially responsible beyond your contribution if the fund doesn't have enough money. Now, the program that is likely going to quote has never had an assessment. Assessments rare, but it happens. There is a tool, Texas Association of, I can't remember, it was TAPS, which I thought was ironic. They had a big loss and they totally collapsed, and all their members are still paying. So that is a big, a big issue. Now, the nice thing about them is that applications are easier, they are designed for schools, they have risk management tools for schools, they have training for schools, that's all they do. So, and it's Missouri. You don't have Illinois, which is its own world, you don't have California, we don't want that. It's Missouri. And so, and you'll know the members, you'll know the boards, you'll know them. And if they're having problems, you can pick up the phone and say, you better get your act together, because, you know, we're in this together. So that's kind of the pool mentality. So leaving is not, is easy. Sure, company to leave, just don't pay the premium, just don't renew. Simple, nothing to it. For a pool, you usually have to give them sixty days notice, and sometimes it's non-revocable, sometimes you have to pass a resolution. Well, you might not have, it's hard to get a fully insured quote sixty days in advance. So will the pool even quote you if you say you're leaving? Now, the one that we're looking at is actually very lax on that. They say, if you go out to RFP, we'll consider that your notice, we're still going to quote, but they don't have to. I mean, they may, they may not. So it, and usually if you leave, you can't go back in for three years. And I think that is the case for the pool that we're looking at. So you have liability, you got to keep track on that, an eye on that. You just can't walk away. It's yours. You have to make sure you know the withdrawal notice. You have to know that the board has authority on the board. So oftentimes what happens is you turn in a claim, the claim gets denied. You don't think it should have been denied, you can appeal it to the board, and if they say no, some pools have no right of recourse. So that's that. You can't sue the pool. That all spelled out in their bylaws. So reading those bylaws is very important. Important is, pools is a commitment. Pooling can be great, but it's not for everybody. I'm not pro pool, I'm not against pools. They're a great solution for some, they're not really good for some, and that's okay. You have to look at this as not insurance. It's just not like you go to auto owners and you get your auto this year, and the next year you're going to go to Safeco. This is something that you need to commit to. Now, that doesn't mean you have to commit forever, and I know as a board, you can't make commitments for future boards, but in theory, and you should try to think of this as being a partner. Not, we're just not buying insurance, we're creating a partnership with our other school districts. Again, sixty-day notice, and you have to review all your documents thoroughly. So I kind of ran through that fairly quick. If you show up to next week's math club meeting, we can talk some more. But, you know, it's, again, it's a good program. I have a lot of clients in pools and I have a lot that aren't in pools, that have no desire to be in pools. And neither one of them is right or wrong. It's fine. But I wanted to at least take a few moments today to kind of give you the high-level concept of the differences, again, so that when you're looking at a pool versus insurance in a month or so, you don't have all these questions coming at you. So with that, do you have any questions or concerns or comments or additional information you'd like for me to gather?
And we'll just go around. Do we have any, any questions at this point? Dr. Wartik, no?
I am, I've got a couple of questions, actually. In this pool that we would be considering, what's the, where's the spread of the risk? So is it all Missouri schools? Is it?
All Missouri schools.
So if there was a disaster in Missouri, a tornado ran through and took out a bunch of buildings all the way, then that would be a huge contribution back to the pool, correct?
Not necessarily. No, one loss isn't going to hurt you. Property insurance renews itself every time you have a loss, so, and there's spread of risk. So let's say we have a weather event, whether it's hail or windstorm, and it takes out, let's say it takes out four hundred million dollars worth of property, five hundred million dollars worth of property, maybe eight hundred million. I think right now the pool's limit per loss is one billion dollars. And then that would renew the next day. Now, the pool would pay the one point five, your reinsurer's not going to be real happy. And so those costs will go up. But think of it this way. That cost, if it goes up ten percent, your cost isn't going up ten percent. It's kind of buffered by all your members. And really, insurance is a pool, too. I mean, they have a big, but they have the spread of risk. So to your point, there's advantages to having it broader. But there's also advantage, especially on the liability side, having it Missouri-focused. That way, it can be designed around Missouri sovereign immunity and other defenses that you enjoy that other states don't. But it would take, it would take a lot, and that's why it's very important to look the financials, stay engaged, and be involved, because you own a part of an insurance company.
Do you share the portfolio of schools, if we were to look at this?
Absolutely, yeah. We would definitely get a list of all the schools, get the separation of risk, we'll get their last audited financial statement, have Matt and his team look at that. We would look at it as well, get their last actuaro report. Yeah, we would definitely do a deep dive. And then we would, on the key components of a bylaws, we'd point those out as well, as far as withdrawal, dispute resolution, things of that nature.
With it being a hard market in property with all the disasters going on, how's that affecting the pool right now?
Well, premiums are going up, or contributions, I made my own mistake there. Contributions are going up, but not, not at a rate. For example, the pool that we're looking at, and I have to, forgive me, I can't remember what your property deductible is for wind and hail, but it's likely two percent per building with a hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar minimum per loss. The pool likely has a ten thousand dollar deductible. So, you know, right there can be a big deal. Tell me what's going to happen next year, I'll tell you the best way to go. But the reality is, that's one of the advantage of the pool is typically lower deductibles.
One more question. I'm sorry, I had a few.
It's all right.
Does this also pool cover professional liability, D and O liability?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then you mentioned seventy percent for the loss fund and thirty percent for the reinsurance. Is that, did I catch that right?
It'll be the reinsurance, the administration, third-party administrator, claims handling, things of that nature, yeah. That's just the ballpark. I don't know the details of this particular pool.
On the reinsurance end of it, is that market hard, soft? What kind of rates are you getting for?
It's getting better. This year's, and it is for regular insurance, too. We're seeing decreases in property premiums finally. But reinsurance, if the pool's, this pool's been around since eighty-five, and so they've got a good reputation. So, yeah, it's not great, but it's, they have some good buying power. More buying power than we have as an individual school district, for sure.
Yeah, I find it intriguing. I mean, I think that you can pretty much not always predict, but there's some predictability in liability and workers' comp. And a little bit in D and O, unless you just have a really odd year, that somebody's done something really stupid. It's the property part that worries me, which is, that part is the gamble, in my opinion.
It is. Regardless of what direction you go, there's risk in the property. You know, liability for school districts is usually fairly stable. You know, a lot of the claims that I deal with are special ed and are not really insurance claims, so, you know, that doesn't really affect it. Schools that have law enforcement, that probably scares me as much as anything, because that can go from no claims in ten years to one really bad claim in ten seconds. So, but yeah, that's, these are all good questions regardless of if you're buying a fully insured program or a pool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike, Matt, are you the lead in this?
Yes, Dominic and I are working with Charlesworth to do the RFP, essentially.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of comments. I have some of the same questions, and I appreciate Dr. Wartik asking them. And I'll probably set up a meeting just so I can become more familiar with what this is all about. I have to be honest, your presentation didn't make me very comfortable, so I'm going to take time to.
No, my presentation wasn't meant to make you comfortable or uncomfortable, it was just the realities, the facts of the fact.
I want to know more.
Sure, absolutely.
So part of this, I guess, two questions, is you're going to do a risk assessment between comparing the two type of insurances?
Yes, so I'm going to back up just a little bit. We started the RFP process, and one of the reasons we use James and his consulting firm is we have traditionally gone with a brokered insurance, fully insured product. Every five years, we're supposed, we have to do a RFP. We're in that year. We first did an RFP to select a broker, and Lockton has that part of the RFP completed. The second part of the RFP is where the brokerage presents an insurance package, if you will, to us at what their competitive rates are, and then we compare that to what the risk, the association puts together as far as an insurance package. And then we compare those two and pick amongst, pick which one, you know, is the better dollar value or better comfort value, risk profile, all that kind of stuff. So that's what, the reason for this tonight is really to just explain the two different types, so that when, when we come back and make a recommendation to the board to say, hey, we ended up going with this, we're going to say, here's why, and here's the recommendation. But you'll have the understanding as to what the two competitors' different profiles look like.
Okay, well, before that September board meeting, I'll get with you, so I can be more comfortable. And I imagine you mentioned a lot can happen over five years, and if you have a bad year, then they can come back and those types of things. So I'm guessing that part of this evaluation is going to be trended over five years and take a look at. Okay, I'll stop there and I'll get with you. Thanks.
All right. I guess I just have one question overall. Like, how many school districts right now would be involved with this pool?
I don't want to misspeak, so I will get that to Matt to get to you. I'm guessing in the seventy-five to hundred school district range, but don't hold me to that. I should know that, but I don't. I'll get that to you.
Okay, follow-up question then. Are those basically like smaller-type districts, or are we looking at a St. Louis, a Springfield?
That's an excellent question, and that's part of our analysis, is you never want to be the biggest fish in a pool. Because we don't want to be supplementing the little districts. Not, that sounded a little bit disrespectful, but it's just business.
Exactly.
So, yeah, we want, because I know like at least some of the school district, they're in it. And let's see, the other one that's around here, I can't remember off the top of my head. But there's, there's a few that are similar in size, that I don't think you would be the largest, but I'll find that out.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your presentation. And next we have employee engagement survey presentation. Dr. Avila?
Well, good evening again. Hi, I am excited to share with you the results of this past spring's employee engagement survey results, not only because of the data itself and the celebrations that are many, and we're very proud of that, but also because this survey really captures the voices of our employees and brings that into this space, especially at a time of year like now, when you all are heading into a board retreat and getting ready to set direction for the upcoming school year as far as what our priorities should be. Uh, this survey is administered annually with our partners at K-12 Insight. Uh, we, it is developed and reviewed in partnership with CTTN. And we consider it to be a very important survey, because although we measure the success of our districts through our student achievements and what they accomplish, uh, we like to think that we measure the health of our organization through, um, our employee engagement, knowing that high employee engagement is linked with high employee retention and high employee effectiveness and productivity. So, uh, these results will offer us a meaningful glimpse into how our employees are experiencing work, their teams, and our leadership. Uh, tonight, we, we will explore not only what they had to say, um, but also how we can use this insight to further strengthen our culture and support the people who make our mission possible. Because we like to start everything with our strategic plan, I want to draw your attention back to strategy three, which says, "We will ensure, develop, and support a healthy and highly capable workforce that is passionate about meeting the needs of each other and each student." The employee engagement survey is just one piece of data that helps us measure how we're doing in regards to this goal. Some participation data for you. Uh, we continue to add employees, and so we like to see that we are continuing to get partic- higher number of participants in the, in the survey. And so we are holding steady at about 65, 67% participation overall, looking at that three-year trend. So about 2,400 employees participated this past school year. A quick overview reminder of the survey's structure. The very first part of the survey is what they call the overall engagement measure. There are eight items that, um, they take a look at. The second part of the survey are centered around the six engagement drivers or dimensions, the, the factors that they believe truly contribute to an employee's engagement. And then the last section are demographic questions that help us sort the data a bit by years of service, by which site they work at, if they're classified versus certified, and things of that nature. Within that first section of overall engagement, uh, right off the bat, we were pleased to see that we had a 5% increase in the percentage of our employees who are categorized as either highly engaged or engaged. So we went from 79% last year, the year before that, I think it was about 78, to making all the way to 84%, uh, which is a huge celebration. And, and even larger celebration across the board is that every single indicator, not just in this first section, but across the survey improved, every single indicator. That's the first time that that has happened, um, in the years that we have been administering this survey. We also like to take a look again at those two different employee groups, our classified versus our certified employees, to, to make sure that we are being mindful of both experiences, and both of them are right at 84% as well. Uh, the other group that we continue to keep our eye on are, are mid-career employees. They are at about 70, 77% engaged, um, which, and that has been a trend for us as well, maybe move up 1% or 2% each year. And then our staff that are the most engaged are those who've been with us for more than 25 years. And so the longer that they are with us, the more that they are engaged with us. No, I'm just kidding. But they are 91% engaged at this point. Uh, within that section again of the overall engagement, the item that continues to be the most favorable is the one where employees self-report on their level of engagement. "I am engaged in my work." This one increased just by 1%. It's usually about 93, 94, 95% each year. Uh, within that set of eight, the least favorable item, but also the one we saw have the greatest increase in that section, is the one in response to "My workplace provides meaningful opportunities to learn and grow." We were very excited to see a 6% increase in this one, um, especially as we continue to focus our efforts around classified PD. So the other six drivers or dimensions of engagement are work environment, uh, which historically has been the highest rated, not just for us as a district, but also nationally. And then, uh, district leadership, which is the lowest rated, which is also a trend, um, nationally. And then the others are mission and vision, school department leadership, recognition and feedback, and then career growth and training opportunities. And I'm going to share some highlights from each of those with you. So the first is mission and vision. The green bar is this past school year, 24, 25. The one in blue is the year before that, and, and then yellow is the year before that. So while we don't have our national benchmark data back yet to, to compare ourselves nationally, what we do have is our three-year trend data, which you'll see. And as I mentioned before, you can see there, every single item within this section also had some, some large increases, um, and on average between 6% to 7%. Uh, I want to zoom in on just a few. The first one being, "The goals of the district's strategic plan are clearly defined." And this one jumped up by 6% this year, but I also found it very fascinating that just within the last two years, this one has jumped up by 20%. And so almost 80% of our employees feel like we have a clearly deflo- defined strategic plan. We have clear direction about where we're headed as a district. Also in the mission and vision section, we have, um, "I know how I can support the district's strategic plan." And so not only do our employees, um, know what the plan is, but they also know how they can get involved. This one jumped by 6% this past year, but over the last two years has increased by 16%. "The district is moving in a dir- direction that reflects our strategic plan." So this is our employees giving us an indication of how well they feel like we are aligning our actions with our plan. We're doing what we said we were, we were going to do. Uh, it, there was an increase of 7% this past school year, just within the last two years, an increase of 15%. So, again, huge, huge celebrations. And then lastly, I can provide input on how the district accomplishes its goals. And this was one that had been on the radar, radar in previous years, um, but has also seen a 7% increase this past school year and 14% over the last two years. When we, uh, met with our district leadership team back in June, we put this data in front of them. They get the same data reports for their own sites and departments. But we asked them, um, to reflect on what all had been accomplished this past school year and what they felt contributed to these changes. Uh, one of the things that they mentioned, uh, was that, um, there have just been more intentional efforts to put the strategic plan and the balance scorecard in, in front of our employees when we're introducing new initiatives, when we're doing professional development. Again, having dedicated classified professional development days provides increased opportunities for our classified employees to see those connections, to hear that same message over and over again. And just going forward, that is what, what they would like us to do, is just continue to use that consistent language, that intentional communication, and that repeated enforcement of, this is what our plan is, so this therefore is what we are doing as a district. The next section that we saw, um, the greatest gains in, was district leadership. And you may have heard me just say that this is the lowest rated dimension, but this is one where we also saw some huge gains just within the last couple of years. Again, zeroing, derailing in on just a few of them. District leaders' actions are consistent with their words. We saw 7% increase in this one this past school year, but over the last two years, a 10% increase. District leaders clearly explain the reasons behind decisions on key issues. 7% this past school year, 16% over the last two years. Uh, district leaders value the voices of employees. Uh, this was a new item added to the survey last school year. You may recall that we switched to the 2.0 version of the K-12 Insight survey. Uh, so we don't have that two-year comparison, but again, another 7% jump in this one here. And so, again, we asked our district leaders to, to tell us from their perspective what did they feel like, um, contributed to these changes. And, um, I, I don't mean to put Dr. Davis on, 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 um, on display here, but her name came up over and over again, and just the tone and the demeanor that she, um, brings, the priorities that she clearly articulates with being champions for all students and each other. That she, um, district leadership is transparent, more visible, uh, genuinely seems to be invested in employees, multiple points of contact, whether that be through superintendent site visits. This last year, we had, um, even more opportunities to get in front of staff with the bond presentations, um, HR with, uh, meeting confers, meeting with, um, individual employee groups, um, and then just general cabinet-level visibility and sense of shared leadership overall. And so those were the things that our district leaders felt contributed to some of these great gains. The next two dimensions, school and department leadership, as well as work environment, those tend to be historically where we, um, score the highest, and, and there's no difference there. Um, as you can see here with school department leadership, we're in the seventies, um, across the board. And, and we like to, to think, or what K-12 Insight would tell us, is that employees tend to rate more favorably the, the supervisors they work with more directly, um, and the colleagues in the work environment that they sit and provide for them. So here are just a couple of others, and I'm going to zoom in on just a few here. "I can count on the support of my supervisor when addressing problems or issues." Uh, we hear, um, even in the open response items about the importance of feeling supported. And we know that support can mean a lot of different things, depending upon who you ask, but knowing that this one is also continuing to remain strong and also experienced a 5% increase this past school year from our direct supervisors to their employees, that's huge. Uh, "My commu- my supervisor effectively communicates about important issues to me." A part of creating that culture and that climate is clear, consistent, and supportive communication. So again, very happy to see a 5% increase with that one. "My supervisor promotes a positive work culture." And then also, "My supervisor understands my professional needs." And so, um, 5% increase in both of those areas as well. So remaining steady and strong when it comes to school and department leadership. When we talk about work environment, this survey looks at, um, the atmosphere that's created, not just by the supervisor, but also by their peers and their colleagues. Um, do they have the materials and supplies to do the job that they're asked to do? As well as, um, the level of collaboration that's encouraged, the sense of belonging that they feel, the level to which they feel their ideas, feedback, and opinions are valued. And so, as you can see, um, again, in the high seventies and eighties across the board with work environment, but just calling out just a few, uh, "My colleagues promote a positive work environment." This one had been stagnant the last couple of years, um, and, and we wanted to keep an eye on this one, but 82% felt that they have very supportive, um, positive colleagues. Uh, as evidenced also by the second one you see there on the screen, "My colleagues support me." "My ideas, feedback, opinions are valued." This was, uh, an item, as well as the next one, that was added in last year's survey. Getting back to some of the, the goals that we've had on the balance scorecard the last couple of years about creating a culture in which employees feel seen, uh, heard, and valued, and that they have a sense of belonging. So really pleased to see increases in both those areas by 3%. Feedback and recognition, I decided to chunk into two separate parts, so we'll start with recognition first. So the overall sense of, um, feeling appreciated for the work, and then how, um, well our employees feel that the district recognizes employees, as well as, um, the level of recognition that comes from their direct supervisor. Uh, this was one, you may recall that when I shared this presentation last year, after all the work we had done toward, um, strengthening our recognition programs, and we saw just a 3% increase, and I wanted to see more. Well, this year, we saw 9% increase in this area for accumulated a 12% increase over just the last two years. Um, so super proud of that one. As well as what our direct supervisors are providing to their departments and their school staff. 72% of our employees feel like their, their direct supervisors do a great job of recognizing them. An increase of 7% this last year, and then 10% over the last two years. Looking at feedback, um, this is an area, um, that I would say is an area of growth for us. Uh, we, it's still pretty strong, as you can see, communicating expectations at 77% is, is still a really good number, um, as well as 70, I'm sorry, 67% of our employees feeling that they get regular constructive feedback. Um, because it's a bit more stagnant, we wanted to dig into this one a little bit more. And one of the things that the K-12 Insight survey allows us to do is to disaggregate the data into classified versus certified. And this is where I think we found some, some greater direction as far as where we should, um, put some of our efforts. So when we look at these two items about clearly communicating expectations and then regularly providing feedback, we see a bit of a gap, of a gap in the experience between our certified versus our classified employees. And that got us to thinking about, well, what does the classified employee evaluation look like? Um, what are the opportunities that those staff members, uh, have to receive regular feedback to the same level that our teachers do and some of our, our certified staff members? And so this is an area that we want to hone in on, and we've been, in communication and collaboration with HR about, um, some steps we can take with regard to this for next year. The last domain or driver of engagement is career growth and training. Again, increases across the board, and, um, the highest being the district encourages continued education and professional growth. Um, it's a known value of our district that, that we really prioritize continued learning, not just for our students, but for the adults, the employees, the leaders, uh, from top to bottom. And so that remains strong. And just a few that we have also continued to look at, again, just being mindful of the work that we're doing with classified PD and trying to quantify the impact of that. The training I have received has, has helped me perform my job more effectively. Uh, we saw an increase of 3% there. So it's improving, but this is also an area that we want to continue to, to grow in and strengthen. Um, so you may recall last year I shared, one of the features of the K-12 Insight survey is that, um, they don't just give us the results, they also look at the correlation to engagement, to help us figure out where should we, what, which items really have the strongest correlation with engagement? So that's how we know, uh, where to focus our energy. And so what they call the greatest opportunities to maintain engagement are the areas where we already score pretty high, but they also have a high level of correlation with engagement. So these are things that we definitely want to keep doing. And so it should be no surprise that school department leadership and work environment are continuing to strengthen communication, um, having consistent action, promoting a positive work culture, and strengthening a sense of belonging are the things that we're doing well, that we should definitely continue to do well. The best opportunities to improve engagement are those that we, compared to, to ourselves, rate lower, but also have a high correlation with engagement. And, um, so what shows up here is district leadership, uh, recognition, feedback, and training. But you also just heard me say that those are all areas of, of great gains and lots of celebration. And so these are things that we should continue to do, um, continue to be visible, continue to be consistent between what we say we're going to do and what we actually do. Um, continuing to expand district and site-level recognition and strengthen opportunities for feedback and training, um, across the board, especially for our classified staff. And then the final part of the survey is, is an open-ended response where employees can, can give us feedback, um, positive, constructive, um, on whatever they'd like to say. And we look over that and pull out what are some of the common themes that show up over and over again. And one thing I will say, this survey was administered in March, um, so we fell into the situation to where we gave the survey before. We had approved salaries, uh, raises, and the additional FTEs that were added last year in response to some of the needs we were hearing from staff. So that isn't always reflected in the open response, because we hear them saying they want more. But it's good to know that we, we put our efforts in the right direction. Uh, so specialized professional learning. Um, this is primarily from our classified staff, um, wanting to have more professional development opportunities that's tailored to them, um, improving in the current job that they're doing, but also just some of the other specialized roles such as our encore teachers, our counselors wanting more PD relative to what they do. Student behavior solutions, this is one that you've seen year over year. I will say we're seeing it less and less in the open response. Um, and this one is also tied to that, that third item there of just wanting more staffing to, to, to be able to respond more quickly, um, and more effectively to the student needs that are presenting in our, our classrooms and in all our spaces across the district. Along with that, we've talked before with the board about the increased population we have with, with ELL and special education, um, and then also just, um, a need for continuing to add on to our counseling staff to, um, to, to support the needs that are there. Uh, I've mentioned salary, leave, and benefits. And then the last one, initiative support there, uh, was primarily around just some of the things that are starting to catch some, catch some steam, such as standard-based learning, standard-based grading. Um, it's still new, the ball is rolling, but wanting to have continued clarity about the direction and high-quality professional development to make sure our staff are prepared to implement this effectively. So then where does all this data go? Well, it goes to our retreat tomorrow, where you all will, um, set course for this upcoming school year, help us determine what goes on that balance scorecard as our priorities for the year, which become the superintendent's goals. Uh, this data also goes back to CTTN. Again, this is done in partnership with CTTN, and it helps to inform their issues list. And then, as I stated before, we've already shared this with our building department leaders so that they can be thinking about, um, with their teams, what they can do to improve. And so that is your employee engagement survey results for the year. I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you.
Um, this is, I know it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of work to compile out there and to remind people to take the survey and to do all the things, so I appreciate that. people to take the survey and to do all the things, so I appreciate this because this is very helpful and it really does guide our conversation, so thank you.
My only comment is, I think sometimes you're hard on yourself when you look at the negative part, and there's so many celebrations and good data in here that was good to hear. I think on the district part, I think the further you get away from the classroom, the harder it is to know what district's doing. And I think what you talked about tonight was making those connections to this balance scorecard, being in the buildings and those type of things showed your numbers go up. But I do think there's just something about, I don't know what Dr. Daniels does, I know what I do, and I know what my boss does, but I'm not sure. So those numbers, I thought, were really, really good. I know you guys will still reflect on it and still think how to get them higher. It's the nature of the business.
That's what we do.
Yeah, absolutely. Excellent presentation, thank you.
Well, I said it last year, and I'm going to say it again and piggyback on Dr. Wartik, sometimes I do believe you all are too hard on yourselves. When you can... This larger organization, if you can get sixty-five percent of the employees to participate in anything, you're doing a really great job. And then to get overall engagement at seventy percent, and you're up at eighty-four, again, huge, huge, huge for an organization this size. And you know, all your trend data was up, some, you know, very huge gains. And to your point, Dr. Vila, you know, people really engage with their local leadership, but when you can get the people at the local level to respect and recognize the leadership at the executive level, again, I attribute that to you and your CO team. Just great, great data. Thank you for all you do.
I am so excited about this. Like, I am just so happy and not surprised, but pleasantly surprised because it's just so great. And the participation, the... What was like two hundred plus, I think it was like plus two hundred more? I mean, that's... It's just so great, and I don't... We have such an amazing cabinet, we have such an amazing superintendent, and that communication between our cabinet and that collaboration, it trickles down. I mean, it is so apparent, it just... It trickles down from the leadership, and when it's working here, it just trickles down, and it is felt throughout the whole entire district. So I just give so much praise to our cabinet and to our superintendent and to their relationship and their ability to work together. It's just everything. I also give so much praise to our communication team, because so much of... I mean, we've... We work so hard, and we do so many good things. Communicating that, making that known that this is what's happening, how can people know to appreciate it if it's not being communicated, like what's happening? So I just give so much credit to our communication team as well. I know that we can only get better, but I just think communication is the key to so much. So I appreciate that that's on our list of things to do better, because we can always get better. But I mean, we just have such a stellar communication team, and I just think that's really awesome. I did have one question, as far as feedback goes, it's not really... Well, maybe it's a question, I can make it a question. So I know that we have, like, you know, opportunities for evaluations. My question is, what kind of... What training do we have for our leadership in our schools to, I don't know, to help people, to help our school leadership know how to give consistent feedback, not just at evaluation time? You know, I feel like evaluation time is a key time to, obviously, to give that structured feedback, but kind of just consistent feedback all along the way might not necessarily even be classified as feedback because it's not structured, but I think that's a crucial part of, you know, having uncomfortable conversations in a constructive way is a skill that I think is really hard to learn. So, you know, what training are we giving our teachers on how to communicate with the classified staff, and vice versa, and our school leadership on how to give that consistent feedback?
What you're speaking to is exactly what we noticed as a gap. So on the instructional side, we have the formal evaluation process, but we also have weekly walkthroughs. And our principals, our teaching and learning coaches are trained in what to look for and how to offer that feedback, and they go out together to calibrate their lens and how would you phrase this, or what did you notice and whatnot? And so, that structure and that support exists for our certified employees for the most part, but we don't have something comparable to that on the classified side of things. And so, that's something that is a goal that we're working towards for next year with our classified department leaders.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the visual storytelling that you're able to show in the way that you're interpreting and showing the data. So thank you for really succinctly and concisely capturing and making it really easy for us to process. So I appreciate that, so thank you so much for that. A couple of observations, I don't know if they're questions, they're just thoughts that I had as I was listening to you and then also reading. So in the increase in district leadership or kind of perceptions of what kind of proximity or district leaders doing better for clearly explained reasons, one thing that I think might make a big difference for this year is that this year was all about the bond, and so it was kind of like a singular message, right? And so, there was a singular focus, so I'm wondering what we can learn from that to leverage that kind of singularity in a goal or a purpose that helps people kind of rally behind, right, a shared vision of the future and a shared goal that everyone is going towards. So I think there's some potential connection there, right, around what happened to be a bond year. And then the feedback data was really interesting to me. I think a couple of things. One, for the certified staff, I wonder what the... I think there may be also, and I'm just projecting, perhaps with the adoption of standards-based assessment and curriculum, like, there are just more opportunities for teachers to practice those muscles as a part of their everyday, because it's part of how we're kind of building it into what we're teaching our students to do. So I'm wondering, are there ways that we can build that more into the everyday, right, for our classified staff? I noticed that, I think in one of the contracts that we had on the consensus agenda, maybe it was last month, an engagement with Fierce Conversations, that group, and so, that's a very well-known area. So I'm just... I think, obviously, you're thinking about it already, and I appreciate all of the ways that you're engaging people. And then the other thing I would suggest around the, kind of that ongoing, continuous feedback or feedforward is looking at more of the positive psychology approach where you engage people and building their muscles and strength spotting, right? So having people recognize what people do really well, because it's a lot easier to do more of something you already do well than it is to learn something you don't know how to do, or you weren't aware of. So that might be another way, right, to be thinking about how do we continue to build that feedback muscle? That's a critical part of helping people feel like they're learning and growing and that we're in this development area. So just some comments and observations, but I just really am so impressed every time, Angelique, you present and show the data, you're... Just aesthetically, I very much respond to how you present the data and really admire the way that you tell that story, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Susan, I just wanted to comment on your first point about the singular message and the bond campaign. It is important to point out that in the fall visits, we take a lot of the themes that we see from this employee engagement survey and say, hey, this is what we heard. Did we hear you correctly? And it is more of a conversation than a pat presentation like it turned into in the spring, but it certainly is derived from themes that we get out of this survey, and that's very important to us. It'll also be very much focused on what y'all come up with tomorrow, when we have the balance scorecard and a vision and a direction clearly stated. I always start in communicating that as well, but then have much more time for conversation with staff members so that I can get a good read, ground truth, more than anything. But thank you for that point, it's a good one to keep in mind.
Yeah, I also appreciate what you raised there, because a lot of that engagement is also about feeling like they're heard, and so, having those fall conversations, I'm sure, very much reinforces the belief and just the sincerity and kind of the trust, right, that, okay, if I respond to this, someone's actually hearing and reading what I'm saying, and they're going to address it. So that's a really powerful way to continue to reinforce, and I just so appreciate that your leadership is about listening with the expectation that you will be changed by what you hear and really digging into that curiosity, so thank you for that.
For the way you phrase things, I love that. Thank you.
I know, right? Sometimes it's hard to go after Susan when you're making comments because she puts things so eloquently, and then there's me like, oh, trying to stumble through it. But yes, this was really interesting for me to go through, especially kind of being a newbie here. The stuff that's... Some of the stuff that stood out to me that I did love to see was, you know, the school and department leadership and the work environment scoring so high because that's the day-to-day, the building that they're walking into, the people that they're working with, and that's really what gives you that job satisfaction and, you know, being around people that you can trust. So that's fantastic. And really, I took a bunch of notes, but I think a lot of it is for tomorrow to kind of dig into some more of these discussions. I did love what you said, though, Dr. Daniels, about that there is a discussion that you actually say, this is what we heard, did we hear you right? Because I think that's really important, because you're also going to have people that... Some people that didn't answer this, or, you know, didn't maybe... Didn't feel like what they were thinking was able to come through on the questions, but making sure that we're pushing it out to have actual conversations and eliciting additional feedback is so important. And one thing that I was just curious about, because whenever, being like a former teacher, whenever I look at these things, I'm thinking of all of these questions through a teacher's lens, like, as I was a teacher, this is how I would answer. What is the split, though, between like, how many, you know, of the, you know, sixty-five percent or whatever that you answered? What's kind of the split between how many classified and how many certified? Is it about fifty-fifty, or do we get more certified or more classified feedback, or...
We tend to get more certified. And I will say, the past two years, again, with the addition of classified PD days, we've been able to allocate some time on those days for our classified employees to take it right then and there. And that's increased participation, but this past year was sixty-two percent certified, thirty-eight percent classified.
Thank you, as always. I guess my... Just one question, it's like, how long have we actually been doing this kind of specific survey?
It's been a while. So we tried to pin down a number from Amanda Bearden, and she went way back to when there was the NEA Welfare Survey.
Okay.
But I know K-12 Insight has been at least the last six years. Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, I think the thing that's most responsive to all of this is a quote that I've been working with a lot lately, and it's like, it's not what you want, it's what your community wants from you. And that's really true. I mean, you can go in and say, well, you know, we're going to do this, this, and this, and if that's not what your community wants you to do, even though they may be great, wonderful ideas, you know, it's what your community wants from you. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
All right. Thank you. Next, we have any board liaison reports? I think we've gone to every basketball game, baseball game, track meet, wrestling, et cetera, robotics. Did we miss anything?
I just have one comment.
God, Joe.
Well, excuse me, Jane, it is a meeting. Jane, see, I'm going to call you out first.
Sorry.
Susan, Erin, Laura, and Tammy Henderson and I went to the North Kansas City Business Council, and we actually got to listen to Jesse Smith, the new mayor of North Kansas City. This is just my opinion, these fine ladies can offer their opinion, but I thought he was dynamic. He has a vision for that city. I think they're going to be well-served by his leadership, and I look forward, I guess, on August 12th, Tammy, we're going to meet with Mr. Smith, so, or Mayor Smith, so I look forward to that, but I found him to be well-suited for that job.
I forgot we went to that, sorry. I looked back through my calendar, I'm like, nah, okay, but thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Tomorrow morning, early, eight o'clock, we have the retreat, all day, dressed comfortably but business casual, and our next meeting is August the 26th, so we will see you all then. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.